Our lab seems eerily quiet. Are you the only one there, Amy? Leave if you can hear me.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Here, I'm like going furiously to see if my headphones are turned up. I'm like, oh, did I send her a wild goose chase?
Yeah, okay, I think we're good now.
Okay, cool. Why hello? Hey, so we, we need to continue this show tune sort of conversation again because no, or, or theatrical use. Because I grew up on that so much. My, my mom and dad, when we were kids in England, belonged to the London Operatic Society. And they were in all kinds of plays when we were kids and this and that. And they continued when we moved to Denver. When I was seven. And they were in all kinds of stuff. And the thing that I, I was gonna tell you is my, they did a version of, what's the one with the major generals?
Pirates of Penzance.
Thank you. Well, dad was one of the generals. And they got a write-up and, and the Denver Post, which is the big paper out there was at least at the time, if there are such a thing anymore. But they were, they wrote this glowing review of the music and this and that. And they said, one of the British officers, they pointed my father out. His accent was so over the top. It was, you know, not to be believed kind of thing. And he was the only, my mom and he were the only real British people on the cast. And my dad said that he thought it was the greatest thing. And he was like, I was the only British one there who had spoken.
Where were your parents from, David?
Long, long answer. My mom was born in Oxford, England. Dad, dad was born in Gilgit, India, which is now Gilgit Pakistan. But dad was born on a military base because his father was the regent authority when Britain was still ruling India. Wow. Back in the day.
Now you're dating yourself.
Yeah, well, what, that was, that was my dad's parents, you know, mom just turned 91. So I'm the youngest of my family. But so then dad, his parents passed away in a drowning accident and dad went to school. They, they sent them back with family in England. And so they, they grew up, dad went to Oxford University, met mom. And so they're from there. Two of my sisters were born in Scotland. My sister Allison and I were born in England. So we're, and two of my sisters moved back to England and two of us stayed here.
Well, my, my brother's an Oxford man also.
Oh, really? Which, which university?
Uh, is it King's College, maybe?
Kings, yeah. My dad was a new college man.
Eagleton. So I think, I think that's where he was, I think. I don't know. I can't remember. I have it. I have my school scarf from there. So it's dark blue with like red and yellow stripes. If that, if that helps.
My, 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 my dad's university color was like this bright purple and dad was colorblind. So it suited him fine. So, you know, I can't bear with throwing away his old huge college scarf, but, but it's quite a color, but. But yeah, dad, dad was on the, dad was on the Oxford rowing team. And three of the years he was on the team, they won head of the river, which is a big distinction in the rowing group. And so I have in my upstairs, three of my dad's oars from the three years that they won it, that he was on it, which was kind of cool, including one of them has both my dad's, they're, they're painted and in gold leaf and everything. They're pretty cool. There needs some rest, restoring, but they're cool. But they're, you know, 14 feet long kind of thing. So. But one of them has my dad's name and my uncle's name. Even though they were seven years apart in age, they attended Oxford. They overlap for one year because my uncle was in the RAF during World War Two. And he was my dad's older brother and dad never served. So. So they actually went to mute. Yeah. So it's kind of cool. Those two got to row together.
This is kind of cool. What's up?
Yeah. So I have some, some very cool family kind of history like that. My dad wrote it all. My dad just loved history. So. We go all the way back.
Wow, there are a lot of.
All right, we're working on it.
He was at St. Anthony's. That could have been it.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe that's it. St. Anthony's. It was one of the newer ones.
There's a, quite a few. There's quite a few.
That must have been it. St. St. Anthony's. That's where he was, I think. Maybe he did King's Heart. What is that? He did his masters at University of London. Maybe that was King's College. I don't know. I can't keep track of those degrees.
Well, that last time I was, I was in Oxford was a few years ago with my wife. And we were visiting my sister and my relatives who live up that way. Oxford University was just crammed with tourists. I mean, it was just with buses and this, I mean, you know.
Well, you know, it's pretty.
There was, there was like more cameras and baseball caps than there were students on campus. It was just, it was quite, you could tell who was a student who wasn't because they were all nicely dressed. So the students that was not the, not the riffraff.
Very. Are we all here?
Everybody but Betsy and Burnell's on his way. We're just waiting for Betsy.
Um, are we expecting Ken tonight?
Yeah, can you guys see him?
Is he hilarious? Yes. He's sort of in the top strip of your, the very top strip of your screen.
The owl thing is really hard to see it, but it's just as hard to see everybody. Yeah.
Yeah, if you take it out of gallery view and someone's speaking, it's, it's easier, but.
Probably.
Where is our cheerleader in here? I know, maybe she did. Let me see. She's texted trying to get on or something.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
Here you are, Maya.
Yeah. I don't know why, like, sometimes it stays my name and sometimes it doesn't. I don't get it. Ah, okay. Are we the only two on video tonight? Or, oh, Jess is here. She's on video.
Yeah, no, Greg is on video.
Oh, they're, yeah, they're here. Yeah, it looks like their connection dropped off, doesn't it?
Yeah. Oh, boys, is Amy, Amy must be.
Yeah, they're, they're both there. They're just trying to reconnect.
Okay. So, so sadly, I got COVID.
Oh, no, no.
Yeah, I would no idea, no idea. And I'm the only one in the house that got it. Like, my husband didn't get it. My kids didn't get it. I don't understand how that happened. Other than that, we're all, they're vaccinated. I am too, though, you know, but whatever. It wasn't too bad, but I was out all last week with it. Came down. Yeah. So, but I'm all better now. I'm out of my 10-day. But what an ordeal. I mean, so we have an eight-year-old and two six-year-olds. And, you know, like, I'm isolating in a room.
Good luck.
Six-year-old doesn't know what that is.
Everybody get tested in your household?
Yeah. So they all get tested at school anyways. Um, and then my, I think my husband's tested four times. And every time negative. And then he tested negative again this past Monday. And yeah, so just me, but it was really, I mean, it was really mild. It was more like I was just really tired and I just sort of throat for a few days, but. Yeah. It's over, though. It feels like a hundred pounds lifted off my shoulders. You know, because you like, you worry. I've been worrying for two years.
Well, now you have some immunity for a while. So that's good.
That's right. I know. I, I was saying, I'm gonna do all the things. I have 90 days to do all the things. I'm gonna go to the movies. I'm gonna go out to dinner. Do it again.
All right.
Okay, is Amy, so Amy is. Hi, Ken.
Yeah. Amy's under Owl Labs, you know, the, the City Hall one. So she's back.
Oh, she's back. Okay.
Yes.
Could we ask Ken to say something? Because it looks like Owl Labs is muted right now. There was that same problem earlier.
Oh, yep. It's, it is muted. Figured out, Amy. Well, uh, Ken? Okay. There we go.
There you go.
Awesome. Well, let's see. It is 7:04 PM. So I'll call our meeting to order. It is Wednesday, February 2nd. Is that right? Oh, my gosh. So I will take a roll. Who's here? Hershey Hirschkopf.
Here.
Greg Zinser.
Here.
Ken Conley. Natalie Gove is not here. And I'm here, Betsy Randall. There's four of us. And then I did receive an email from Burnell, our new alternate. And he will be here in about 15 minutes. So he will technically be an active voting member this evening as soon as he arrives. Um, is.
Point of order.
What?
Do we, if we have a quorum, which is three, do we then, do alternates get on to make it five? Or do we have to vote that alternates get to then participate and have a vote? Because I think we have to agree.
Amy.
Vote.
Amy or David?
The bylaws require, if we're short a member, the chair can essentially activate one of the alternates.
Short a member, short of five?
Yeah, it says if someone's out, the bylaw say that the chair can allow an alternate to become a member for the evening. So that probably should be, you know, formalized in the evening minutes.
Right, right. So Dave, are you trying to say? I know, I was gonna agree with you and just say that, that I guess when, when he shows up, we will say, welcome to the planning board and you're it. But we aren't, I don't think there's any action tonight, is there, that we, that the board is actually gonna vote on? Oh, we need, we need to do the bylaw second readings. You could take things out at work. Nevermind. Could, might I suggest that maybe we go through the, the first part of the meeting and then maybe until the alternate shows up. And then maybe start from the bottom. So we could set with discussion items from number five up. So we could set a date for Christie Rabasca. And then maybe do the bylaws because that, the new member wouldn't be able to vote anyway.
But that's a great idea. Actually, let's, um, for, so first, I'm just gonna ask if there's anybody here from the public that has anything to talk about tonight? That is not on the agenda. Hearing and seeing no one, um, can we, let's just start with approving the minutes that Amy put out. Did everybody get a chance to review that? Or does anybody need a minute?
I'm good. I'll move the minutes of January 5th, I think, was our, that first one.
Yeah, thank you, Greg.
Do, do we recall, or I, I'm sure, sorry, Amy, but who was at that meeting and who voted? Do we, I want to make sure that people are on these two meetings who were at the meeting actually vote.
Yeah, I'm bringing up.
I should have.
Right, right now, David.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, with all the board changes, I just want to make sure that we have the right folks, that we have a, that you have enough of a quorum to actually pass those minutes.
Yes, we do. For, for the January 5th one, we do.
Okay.
Yep. So, um, yes, it is January 5th, Greg. I'll take a second. Is there a second?
A second.
To any discussion? Hearing none, vote Hershey Hirschkopf.
Aye.
Greg Zinser.
Yes.
Ken, you're there.
Hey, I was here.
And Randall, aye. So that's, that's accepted for zero. And then the other one is from January 19th. And it looks like we also have enough people. So I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes from January 19th.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, vote Hershey Hirschkopf.
Aye.
Greg Zinser.
Yes.
Ken Conley.
Yes.
And myself, I, Betsy Randall. So that passes for zero. Those minutes. Only everything was that easy. Okay, um, so hearing, if there's no objections, I will jump down to number five and set the date with Amy, with Amy regarding the meeting with Christie Rabasca. Amy, do you, uh?
Just set a date so I can let her know. I was kind of hoping we could do it on March 16th.
Ooh.
I might be on vacation.
On second? Or April, April 6th?
I'd be down for April 6th. I would, uh.
By me.
Well, how long is that? I mean, what's the, I mean, April 6th works. It's a night of a meeting.
Little, yeah, we'd only do it on a night of the meeting. It's just 10 to 15 minutes. Question about the MS4 permit for this year.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, the six works for me. I mean, I'll be here.
Okeydoke.
Hey, Seth.
Awesome.
Do you want a motion for that?
Yeah, can I have a?
You don't need to. We just need to set the date. You don't need a motion.
Oh, okay. Okay, then. Um, number four, the planning board bylaw amendment, the second reading of chapter A148-2, Officers, the elimination of annual election of the planning board secretary. Let me.
I mean, we pass.
Do we need to read it?
Well, I can make a motion to dispense with the reading and accept it as presented.
Excellent. Go for it.
Just do it.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote. Hershey Hirschkopf.
Aye.
Greg Zinser.
Yes.
Ken Conley.
Yes.
And myself, Betsy Randall, I, that passes for zero. Amy, that's for.
That one was for chapter dash two for officers.
Yeah, I need to bring up, I don't know where my agenda went. I just had it up. Oh, that chapter A148-2 Officers, the elimination of planning board secretary. And then the next one is the planning board bylaws amendment, second reading of the chapter A148, regular meetings, update meeting language to reflect current changes.
Go, Greg.
I'll move that we dispense with the reading of A148 dash what?
Eight. There is no dash.
Okay. Three. Defense with the second reading of chapter A148, reflecting.
Three.
Dash three.
Is it dash? On the agenda, it doesn't say it.
Okay.
So it is, let me start over. So move that we dispense with the second reading of A148-3, reflecting the time change for the planning board.
My second.
Have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Hershey Hirschkopf.
Aye.
Greg Zinser.
Yes.
Ken Conley.
Aye.
Betsy Randall, aye. So that passes for zero. The chapter A148, regular meetings, update the meeting language to reflect current changes. Yay. Okay. Technically, since we're going from the bottom up, number two, continue the review of the 12, 12, 29, 2021 Town Council memo regarding the planning board charge of the solar farm ordinance slash performance standards.
Yeah, and it doesn't, it doesn't matter which of these. I was just hoping that by the time we had gotten to these two items, so the board has a preference between hitting number one or number two, which is the medical marijuana register as a home occupation, or we could go straight into solar farm ordinance performance standards.
It does not matter to me. Does anybody else on the board have a preference?
No.
No.
Okay, Ken? Okay. Uh, let's just do solar farm then. Let's do solar farm.
Oh, yeah. Hey, guys. Burnell is here now.
Hello, hello. Perfect timing. Now, is there a way? I know, Burnell, if, I think if you introduce yourself and start talking, the owl will move to you so he can see you. Would you like to say a few things? About yourself?
Okay, sorry, here. Yeah, Burnell Bailey, I live out on Hooper Sands Road. Okay. Did it swing around there?
Oh, there it is.
Yeah, I live out on Super Hooper Sands Road and just came on board, of course, as you know, just a couple of weeks ago and just trying to get geared up and spun up with some of the issues that going on here.
Great. Well, welcome. Uh, because we have four members here tonight, one is missing. You are an active member of tonight's board in terms of voting. If you so choose, you can abstain.
I'm staying at this point. I understand you have a quorum with the four.
Yes, we do.
Sorry, point of motion, Betsy, maybe. Sorry. The items that are on the agenda tonight, they're discussion items. They are really on the, on the agenda for me to get feedback from the board on these two ordinance amendments. So even as an alternate, alternate member, participation is encouraged. So, you know, all members should be participating, including new ones. Welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Burnell.
Thank you.
Solar farms?
So let's do solar farms.
Yeah.
Do so.
Let's do solar farms, David. Um, did you, had you collected some points?
Yeah, well, I, I'd sent you the memo, correct?
Yes.
Everyone get it? All right. So, um, you know what? I'll, how about I share my screen?
Thank you.
How about this is the latest and greatest. Hold on. I've got, oh, geez, look how much crazy stuff I have open today. God, here we are.
Okay.
Well, there's a there we are. Sorry, there's a photograph. Can you see that now? It does not let me see it if you're seeing what I'm seeing.
Yep.
Okay, moving, okay?
Yes.
Okay, so I sent a, this is disturbing seeing myself too. So, uh, actually, cancel it. Um, in any event, so if you recall, uh, this, the town council assigned the path of the planning board, the task of reviewing solar arrays, solar farm type projects. And as such, they gave the planning board a list of items that they really wanted to, the board to take a look at. And those I included in my memorandum. Hopefully everyone got that. But those items were glare mitigation, view disruption, property value impacts, decommissioning process, conservation impacts, and then any new definitions or any new amendments throughout zoning ordinance that the board thought necessary from this new thing. So what I did is I tried to go through the various documents that solar farms were already have to comply with. So the various performance standards, so we thought, we create, or I started to create a new performance standard section for solar farms, which is this 140-67.2. That's just the next number in special performance standards for special uses. They would also be required to get site plan approval. And so there's the site plan approval reference in the memorandum. I included a link to that. And then there are also performance standards for all uses. So there's a number of different code areas. So I tried to include those to make it all as easy as, as possible. The other thing that's really important to point out is table A, which is a land use table, a beginning of the code is a, is a ordinance section that says these uses are allowed in these districts. And within those districts, these are the reviews that they have to go. It may just be, you're allowed to do it. It may be a code officer has to approve it. Or maybe you come before the planning board to get site plan approval or use approval. And so we have in, in town seen a couple of solo projects come through. And those were listed as of how they were treated or determined before was land uses under a public utility. And that includes sewer collections and treatment facilities. And as you can see by the MSP, that represents major. That represents major site plan approval, so they have to go through the major site plan approval process. And these, all of these various processes, I, I, I should clarify, they go through a approval process with the planning board. But, um, they have to meet the standards of each of the ordinance that may apply for that particular use. Sorry if I'm over explaining that, but I know we had some new folks, so.
We, can we stop there, actually? Can we like, just take off that chunk to discuss for a second before we go on? Is it, we take it sort of chunk by chunk as you explain it, Dave?
Oh, sure, sure, okay.
Otherwise I forget by the time, you know.
Okay, so, so let's talk about the land use table A. Is that okay? We start there?
Yes.
Okay, ta- a table A regulates, uh, regulates the land uses within each zoning district. Currently, solar farms have been treated as a public utility. And it calls out in the land use code, and this document that I'm showing here is just cut and paste straight out of the town's land use code. And so that land use, it was determined that it was a public utility. And, and it says public utility sewer collection slash treatment facility. So it was taken through this major site plan approval. So one of the questions is, as a definition, should these uses be specifically named in the zoning ordinance? And regulated as such, rather than just saying, oh, your public utility, are there other things? Maybe, you know, cell yield power, for example, are taken out of the ordinance. Um, so that's one issue to come up, so, um, I gave a overview of the table A. And again, we're reviewing it this level as a public utility. So what I tried to do is I gave you the entire zoning definition of a, of a, as of a public. Excuse me, as a public utility is any firm, person, uh, any person firm, corporation. Municipal development board or commission authorized to furnish gas, steam, electricity, waste disposal. Communication facilities, transportation or water to the public. So now, uh, so the question really that I posed to the, to the board as we go through is. Do solar farms fall under this? And if so, do we need to specifically call them out in this definition? Or should they have their own definition within the land use code? So on that. I looked at a, like, definition ordinance of what a solar farm is. And ground mounted solar relay, uh, uh, solar array facilities. Is an installation or area of land in which a large number of solar panels are set up in order to generate electricity. I mean, to me, it sort of might as well, I mean, for us not to have a definition of even what a solar farm is. I thought that's maybe an oversight, but, or you consider it a public utility. Keep the current definition, and then you don't need to mess with a new utility. That's really direction from the board. If we do have a new definition for solar farm, the next real question becomes, where is it allowed? And that's a little bit bigger nut to crack, because what things does the board want to look at? Um, rather than just saying, okay, they're in the R3 zone or whatever, they're allowed to do it out there. Should the board be looking at maybe other environmental things? Like, is there some really major environmental areas, which we know there are in town? Should we look at that too? And, and again, that was, that was brought up, I, I have talked about, uh, uh, these actually earlier today. Hershey and I had a conversation about it, so that's, you know, a question, do we need to put this out? And do we need to over really look into the land use? And while we're thinking about it, do we move that into also the conference and plan when that time comes? So, a lot of things to think of.
Thank you, David. Hershey, go ahead.
Um, so I guess I don't think of it as a public utility, because a lot of these are private. So I'm not sure if the public part is supposed to mean for the public good, or it's really, because it does say a corporation or firm, I guess, could own it. Or authorize it, but I don't, I don't think that's what's intended by that passive, so I think we should move it out of that. And also, that gives them a pass at a bunch of stuff that I don't, I don't think we should. So, you know, whether they're adding to the grid and we love clean energy, they're not, I don't, I don't think of them as a public utility, I guess. And I think we should then create a different definition. I think the definition you came up with, David, should distinguish between. Sort of a few panels people put up for their own home use. And these much bigger ones that are, you know, owned by a corporation, um, either on leased or own land. And, um, then are linked directly to the grid in a different way, I guess, or, and have a certain, yeah. And I think Greg can probably articulate this better than I can, because he and I also have a discussion, so.
I, I, I think there's a couple of key questions that we need to frankly answer first and figure out what the board wants to do. And that will really set the stage for how the ordinance is ultimately developed. I, I do agree, I think the definition is really, uh, you know, of a. The public utility right now, I, I really don't believe that that contemplated, you know, solar farms at this point. So I, I really don't see solar farms that we're seeing popping up, uh, being a public utility. I think it is a, I'm firsthand experience with them, I think that it is a commercial enterprise. And really should be reviewed and regulated as such. Uh, so I would advocate that we look at this as not being a public utility. And then really, as you suggested, Dave and Hershey, really look into where these would be allowed. And I think we're going to be getting and, and having to start looking at maps and relation to. You know, all the typical vernal pools, conservation areas, wetlands, and, and really understand where these things could. Even be situated in this town, uh, and just kind of go through it in a methodical process. So, you know, I, 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 I don't, I don't see this as a, a public utility. I think it's really far from it. I'm not going to say they're good or bad, I just think that they're just not a public utility.
Okay, good, uh, while we're, uh, on the subject, is, is that a consensus of the board currently? Uh, or I, I, I was just thinking if, if the board, I, I'd like to hear from the, uh, from the new members, actually, too. I'd figure out if there's, you know, where the board wants to push this, because if it's, if we put its own category in. It, it's, we can place it in the ordinance wherever we want, but that's, it's a real distinction to see if people are on board where. With just the question is, is this a public utility, or should it be a standout definition if we're just talking definitions?
Do you have a question here concerning that?
Yes.
These sections we're talking about here, are these, these town ordinances?
Yes.
Okay, if these, and then these definitions, are they town definitions, or do they come from either state or some other agency or whatever? These like standard, uh, definitions across the state or country?
On the, the. The definitions that the town currently has?
Well, it just, let's take these two that you have right here, this, uh, of utilities, and then there's definition for solar farms.
Okay.
Are those definitions that we made up here, and that's what we go with, or do they come from some standard thing that the state has and their utility regulation? Country or whatever?
The, these currently, can I, can I screen share again?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Whoops. Could you see, is that coming up?
Yep.
Okay, so this definition, uh, if you can see this, this definition that I have right in front of me here, can you see that? This definition for a public utility is taken straight from the town's definition section. Of their land use code or the zoning ordinance. So this comes out of actually chapter 140-9 definitions. So that is a town, a, a, a town definition. Where that originally originated, um, I am not certain.
Okay, that was, yeah.
Okay, now the, the, the town's zoning ordinance does not have a different definition for solar farms. Or whatever they want to call them. So the definition that I placed here is just one that I, I, I looked up. But it was a definition for a solar farm that I happen to like it. I think it might have even been from Webster's or Oxford English or, or something. But I, I thought it was a, a good definition. If the board wanted that new definition in there, I thought this was a good starting place.
Okay, so it sounds like we can manipulate these definitions at will, they're almost.
Yes, correctly, uh, correctly, correct. Um, but any changes that we make to these definitions, uh, do have to, uh, basically be. Put it in a draft form for town council review and approval to be changed in the actual land use code. So all of the, all of the amendments that I have and that I've referred to in my original memorandum. Are all sections from the zoning ordinance, and the document that I said has links to those, so it's chapter 140.
Thank you.
Okay.
Ken, Ken, do you have anything?
I do, actually, uh, if you could scroll, you can scroll back down just a little bit. There we go, um, oh, yeah, oh, too much. Section six, alright.
Okay, there you go.
So more or less to differentiate, I've looked into some of those for some of the properties we have. Uh, if you're looking under any person, firm, corporation, municipal apartment, blah, 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 to the public, to the public. So are we stating that as in, like, the state of Maine's community solar program where you're, you're resailing to. To, uh, it's kind of a, kind of a mixed up bag where you're, you're marketing your own credits back to other people. So there is actually commerce involved. Could we define that as a public utility? And then the private person, say myself, I have solar panels, I would then fall under. Solar farms, ground mounted arrays, blah, 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 of private. We have two lines for that. I think that was more or less what Hershey may have been speaking of before.
Yeah, and, and one of the things, uh, uh, Greg had emailed me this week. And one of the things that I was hoping to pull together for the board tonight, uh, hope I can hit that tomorrow. Was, uh, I've done a number of these solar farms in different communities, and. Most of them have been basically about 20 acres of developed area, give or take. But I thought if I compared the size of the actual lot area that they were using. Uh, and, and I could give you some examples, but sort of say, here's the actual development area. Here's how much power they're producing, and here's what they need, because the most important thing that any. Uh, of these, uh, solar farms are going to be looking for is how they can connect to the grid most directly. So that's something to, to, to keep in mind, but I, I was going to pull, pull together some of these numbers. So at least the board could look at it and go, we're not talking about, uh. But maybe we need to clarify the, the definition, but, um. When this was sent to the board, it was sent as a commercial enterprise, so someone doing about 20 acres of, of solar farm, active solar farms. This isn't for your house, this is like to power a city or a town, um, kind of thing. So there are differences, and I don't think that the, the planning board wants to get into regulating people who are just doing small things at their home. On their.
You're, you're selling something back to the company or other parties involved. Would you be able to define it with that alone, rather than the business owner that has 10 acres covered? Supplying his shop on his own, it would be a different line, and, and actually taxes involved as well, I imagine. Yes, so.
Yeah.
Uh, Hershey.
So, um, and can I just, I, I, I'm, I'm just trying to understand and dig in a little more. I, I think really, you know, in terms of zoning and solar farms, it really just has to do with the impact on sort of everybody around you. More than a lot of other things, and, um, you know, you get to do what you want on your own land within reason, right? And then we turn to zoning to make sure we all could live together. So I, I think it might be more about, um, size than it is about, you know, use. So say you built a 20 acre solar farm for your own use. To me, that wouldn't be like a few panels that you're using for yourself. So maybe what it really comes down to is, I don't know, maybe we define it as acreage more than other things. But, you know, it might, it, we could get into, I don't know, very weird territory, I guess, if we said it has to be for your home use. Versus a corporation who comes into leased land or build it themselves and tie into the grill and is just making money off of that. And, um, I, I'm not sure what to think about that. I'd have to give that a lot more thought, I guess.
To keep the hands tied to the corporations and then, and allow you. Yeah.
Well, I, I, you know, everybody gets fair use, and I'm not, I, everybody, I think here probably would agree that clean energy is really important. And encouraging solar farms is important, until of course, you know, we have 20 of them in our town, right? And so, um, we can't zone them out of existence, and I don't think that's fair, nor should we, nor do we want to. But I also think, you know, like everything, we want to do, we want to make sure we've thought wisely about where they can go. With the least impact on everybody else, right? So, um, and I'll get into this next bit, that there's a tool at Maine Audubon that they put together that maps all of Maine. And it's, it's supposed to, it has layers, and it's to be used for towns figuring out where to cite. Solar farms of this, these big solar farm types. So, um, it means somebody has to decide to go through the map zone by zone. Because it points out, you know, vernal pools and, you know, watershed areas and waterways and setbacks. And you can, you get to the point where you can say, here are the, you know, in each zone, here's, here are plots of land that would be appropriate. And then we have to decide if there's a size limit, if there are, you know, a lot of it, a lot of these performance standards, David hit spot on, I think, and are already in place. But there's still a lot to sort of sort through, and, um, I don't know if David is the person, or we want a little subcommittee of the planning board to look at this tool that they have. Or if that's the one we should even use, but that's sort of where I'm heading, is trying to just figure out, instead of having them like come in with their plan. And they can go in any single district in town, except for some reason R5, I don't understand that at all. But, you know, we can already say, we know we don't want them here, here and here, don't even bother, because it's, you know, environmentally sensitive. Or it's too dense, or, right? So I'd rather do that work upfront and then limit where they're allowed to, to go, as opposed to waiting for them to come in.
Um. So I'm just looking at the document, um, for, for a minute. Back to, um, performance standards and specific uses in the table land use. Um, you know, I. I totally see both sides of the coin in terms of if it's a public utility or if it's a private. You know, commercial, you know, there's so much profit to be had in solar. At the same time, we are going to rely on these people. If we are transitioning out of gas and oil. And I just, I, so I'm, I'm torn in terms of if it should be a public utility for, in that sense. But on the other hand, I feel like solar is its own, is its own beast. I mean, you're not, you don't have 20, you know, sewer districts in a town. You're not going to have the demand for that. You're not going to have the demand for, you know, 10 water treatment facilities. And for that reason, I think for the, for really the profit. And the mon- the monetary gains and the demand electric, I mean, I feel like we do have to limit in some way, shape or form. And I don't know if I believe that it's going to be by zone, or if it's going to be based on like an Audubon map. Um, but I think, I think that we need to at least look at, how can we? How can we limit the numbers, but limit them based on, you know, like Hershey said. You know, what's going to be the least impactful to, you know, our wetlands and, and, and whatnot. Um, so I think that for me, I would need a little more thought in, into that. Um, but I'm definitely, I would really like to see the Maine Audubon map, and I don't know if Hershey, that's something you could send to Amy? That Amy could distribute?
No, no, it's, it's an online, it's an online, um, application. So you go to the, you go to Maine Audubon, and there's something you click on, and it's an interactive G, I think it's a GIS or an ARC. It's two different programs, map of some time that you can turn layers on and off and, and look through. But it's meant as a tool to help towns figure out where to put solar, and they probably still have a recording. It was like that one hour webinar that a few of us went to, explaining what it does and how to use it, so you could always watch that too.
Okay, so could, um, Amy, do you know where that webinar is or the link is to it?
I don't, but I'll find it.
I can, I can send you something, Amy, I think I probably still have it knowing me, so.
Yeah, just, just whatever it is that it gets, it, it needs, Amy needs to send it out. Um, so it's part of public record and that everybody, everybody can have it and look at it. Um, I definitely would like to see two separate definitions, um. Because when you're looking at, you know, some homes like my own, I cannot get enough solar on my roof. If we were to do any more solar, it'd have to be a ground. A ground type of thing and I, I would just hate for that. For that one word. Like a ground array to be, you know, taken out of. Context, like if somebody doesn't have the roof and they have to put it in their, you know, on their twenty acres, right? You know, like five panels, you know, I just, I just wanna make sure that we're, that we're not. Putting anything too ridiculous, um. In terms of that, like giving people, giving people opportunities to be able to at least um, get enough electric to cover their own. Um, but I think that having a look at the zoning map. And really seeing what each of these, going through and loo- looking in the. In our book, in our book. And seeing exactly what each of the zones is meant for, what its purpose is and what it's supposed to be used for. Is it gonna give us a good idea of um, maybe if there are certain zones that just, it makes sense to say no. Um, that is all for me, Greg.
So, uh, a couple thoughts. You know, the. Maybe would, there needs to be a discussion and, and I'm gonna ask Ken a question in a minute so I can. Better understand what, what he's saying. Again, I don't believe these are a public utility and if we start to get into, you know, looking to restrict them. In certain areas. Then they're gonna have to. It's gonna, we're gonna have to create its own separate use category because we're, uh, just by us saying that. Whether we say it's a public utility or not at this point, if we're talking about restricting it in certain zones. Where, where we have to create its own separate use because that's going to deviate from table A. So. We're gonna, we're gonna have to do that and, and I think the mapping is important there. Um, but I just kinda have a question so I can understand better, Ken, if you don't mind explaining, are you? Is your concern between like a commercial enterprise and a, and a residential? Application, i- is that? Your, your concern?
Well, the wording under public utility would, would more or less. Infer that it is being sold out to the public, like the community solar program for Maine. You're selling it out to other people, you're selling off your credits. You generate credits with your panels, you don't, they don't actually pay you above and beyond zero. So you're selling off your credits to other parties for, for a fee. So that technically is a small version of a public utility, so it could fall under it if you're selling outbound. Rather than, as Betsy said, five panels on her twenty acres where it is her own. But as I understand it, uh, the individual right now is covered by. The s- standards we have in place. So there is building permit and all kinds of red tape for the individual to jump through anyway, so we have two different things happening. I just didn't wanna see it lumped together. I thought that's what Pershing was speaking of and.
Well. Uh, uh, I, I, so there, there. And I'm gonna be talking really kind of in no particular order, cause it's just kinda, you know, coming to me, we sit here and talk. So. I think we may wanna learn, Dave, you know, we talked, I think someone mentioned. The solar farms are really being here in town or really being kind of pushed or brought on by. The, what I'm gonna call, again, th- these are my own words, more of the commercial application, those looking to connect to the grid. At the five megawatts or larger. And so that's, to me, is really the impetus and there's a couple different things. When it comes to those commercial type of applications, it's the net energy billing credits as well as what I call the carbon offset credits and it's a big business. Uh, and so those types of applications aren't generally. Available to homeowners to a degree. Uh, they're really kind of bought in by conglomerate and many entities formed together to buy into this. Uh, and again, I look at that, it's a, really a commercial enterprise because. It, it's, it's, it's commercial, people are making money, I don't fault them for doing it at all. Um, but I just go back and look at, you know, the definition and when the definition was probably put in. You know, I look at that as really the conveyance of utilities within the public way for the public benefit of everybody. Um, and I'm not so sure the solar does that at this point in time. So maybe we need to look at, is there a distinction that needs to be made here? Uh, between what we'll call large scale and what we'll call small scale and is there? You know. Is there a difference? I don't, I don't know. You know, if I were to put some in in my. Small back piece of land, can I hook up to the grid and, and, and? Get a credit that way, probably. Am I opposed to people doing that? Not necessarily. Um, but I think as you start getting into a certain size. We really need to start being aware of that and looking at the performance standards and what that does and. You know, again, getting into the glare and, and, and environmental impact, so. I don't know, I, I'm, I'm not really sure how to go on this, I, I was really looking at it from the, you know, not a public utility being five megawatts or more. Which is a very sizable, uh, you know, investment. Um, and I think if we're talking about. Moving them or not allowing them in certain areas, then. Then we need to be creating a completely separate use. And then deciding in what zones they go in. So I think it's gonna end up not being a public utility. Just based on where I kinda hear this go and. You know, gonna be down to size and zones and. I, I don't, I guess I don't understand a- enough either. Ken on. The smaller scale stuff, I, I don't have experience with that to really comment.
Really comes down to where we wanna draw the line, as you're saying, if it's five megawatt, then. It honestly seems like there's more than one thing, so five megawatt seems like it's a very commercial and then the community solar is. Is somebody with a large property selling outbound. Credits and then there is the individual off grid like myself who, who does not generate anything outside of their own home. So we, we have many buckets here of a similar thing that is not nearly similar.
Uh, David. Do you feel after our conversation? That you could confidently come up with? A couple definitions that describe the different types of solar farms that we're talking about?
Yeah, I, well, how about I, I can provide you information and possible suggestions for. Different definitions by size and things like that, a- and that should be. One of the starting points was gonna be looking at the ones that have come through area communities and uh, South Berwick itself. Really seeing what we, what we've used, so then from there you could look at, okay, this is really a commercial use. And this is how much area it took up, this person is a, you know, you're, you're putting up five panels, for example, or you're covering your barnery for. Whatever, so I could probably come up with some examples on that, but from what I was hearing, it sounds like. We do need some definitions that the board all wants those definitions in there. And I wasn't hearing anything contrary to at least the. So far as, as far as the suggestions that I had made. As far as what items may be regulated. Or not. So I know I'll, we'll need to add a section on size definitions, size and we'll have to modify the land use table at this point.
Right, unless we decide, unless we decide that we want solar farms to be separate from the public utility. Correct?
I thought that was sort of the inkling.
I know, I, I would, I would prefer, I would prefer to approach this. With various, you know, motions and approvals throughout the process, so we can kind of like. So we can get through it, but you know, looking, there's no way we're gonna like get through everything tonight. But I mean, I would love, I would love if someone wanted to make a motion regarding whether or not solar farms was a separate entity from public utilities. Cause because you think that there is a general agreement, can we do that?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we, we, I don't know if we wanna take any kind of. I, the consensus that I was hearing is that it was. Going to be a separate category, a solar farm would be a separate definition and a separate land use. And start going through it that way. And, and as I go.
I wanna. Sorry, I just wanna clarify between all the members because I can't necessarily see Ken and Burnell and. And I would, I would like to know everybody's opinions on it as to whether or not they agree. Uh, that that's a direction to go in. So, is it?
Yeah, but I mean, you can sort of, i- if anyone objects to me taking that route, maybe that's the easiest. I, I just want a consensus from the board that we're heading in the right direction on this thing. And, you know, maps and, and, and what have you, and that kind of layering will, will, will have to come, but. The first real decision, are they, are they separate from a public utility and I, my inkling is yes, they are. From what I've heard from the board. And then perhaps what I can do is sort of next time. Go through and sort of say, okay, here's something that we need to, you know, I can highlight some of those items, like here's three different definitions for three different sizes. Of this type of use, here's a normal house, how old use, here's this, here's that. Um, it's very possible, uh, that I could mag Joe and. Uh, there's probably already some good definitions in the, in the building codes for some of these things, uh. Or, you know, building electric codes kind of thing, so I, I'll touch base with Joe and see what he can uh contribute on that too. For the next meeting, but.
I guess I'm looking at the key too and, you know, we have the different definitions. And how? How do you? Create? Do we have to have a, have a different? A different line for each kind? Does that make sense? Like, are we gonna have to have like the solar farm commercial? And then the ends where they need to go, the wise they need to go.
They would say.
Yes, I understand what you're saying.
Yes, you'd need definitions for each one, I'm sorry.
We would need to create, we could potentially create like three or four lines is what you're saying.
Right, but, but the, as far as the commercial uses, you could have, I don't care, five different uses of different solar farms, you know, you put up a reflector on your mailbox and that's a solar farm. But you can go, I mean, you can get to that kind of ridiculousness, but I think we need to have that, that cutoff. For, okay, really, this is, you know, if you're putting in twenty acres full of uh, of, of solar panels. You're not generating uh, energy for your house, you're selling it to the grid.
So then we're talking about just two definitions or two separate definitions. And so we, we would have, we could have two lines. So that the land use is different for each.
Correct, and the one that the board could focus on, you could have a definition for something that we're not totally regulating, you can say, this is right, you know, home. As long as we have an ordinance spelling out how large it can go, you can, that authority can be granted already, as it probably already is. Through the building code, so the code officer would. Regulate sort of someone just put, you putting panels on your house or on your barn kind of thing. When you're getting into the commercial type thing, so we can have two different definitions. But only one that the board is interested in regulating, which is these large commercial ones.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, Greg?
Yeah, I'm not gonna, I don't wanna limit ourselves to just two definitions right now, I, I. I guess, as I listened to Ken and listened to the other conversation at this point, I. I really can kinda see maybe three, maybe four different. Definitions. Uh, coming to fruition for part of this conversation and I think. I think in, in part of this is going to be. As we, you know, move, move, move on in this, I think without, without saying it, I think we're all probably agreeing that. This needs to be not considered a public utility if we're going down the road of, hey, there's different applications and that. By us talking about that, that's going to force the changes to table A and make it not a public utility. Now, at the end of the day, we can just put whys all across if that's what we wanna do and give it the same right, so to speak, as a public utility, but. You know, from a, from the commercial standpoint, I think there needs to be some limitations. But then there's gonna be a lot of applications personally that you should be allowed to do by right. So there would be just a bunch of whys and you can be able to do that on your home. In certain acreages or whatever, uh, that, you know, I don't think we should really get involved in and. As long as the standards are there, you know, should be able to be approved by the code officer, so. I really do see uh, completely this being pulled out of, or just, I'm not gonna say being pulled out of the public utility because it's. Arguable whether or not it's even in there to begin with. So I think we just need to create the brand new set of definitions. You know, two, three or four definitions and maybe tie it to different sizes and different. Really different uses, cause I think if I'm hearing Ken correctly. That sounds like a different use than, you know, these commercial five megawatt type things. So there are different uses and maybe we need to look at that and explore that. So that's kinda where I would. I guess that's, that's what I'm looking at. And I think, but, but that being said, the rest of the actual. Standards are not bad. You know, I think it's just this really this overarching. How do we define them and in what zone is really the bigger issue?
Yeah.
And there, oh, go ahead, Hershey.
Sorry, I just, I just wanna point out that I, you know, we're not here to restrict them as much as we're here to discuss sort of good zoning. Right, so I, my goal isn't to like, you know, narrow how many we have, I just don't wanna see. Matt, I'll admit, I don't wanna see forty in our town or maybe even twenty. And I don't wanna see them take over, but I also feel like this is an exercise in what we should be doing, which is sort of like, you know, figuring out where things go and what's appropriate. And as a public utility, it sort of has carte blanche to go anywhere it wants and that's part of the issue for me, right? That's why I agree with Greg and Betsy that, you know, maybe, you know, we should be thinking about it differently, that's all, so.
I apologize that wording was not, you are correct, I, I shouldn't have used quite that wording, restricting though, I don't wanna restrict.
It's okay, it's okay, hey, it's, you know, I've been on the planning board three years and I'm still learning what I should say, so you know, I got you.
It's complex, it's complex, um.
And, and the board members. Are allowed to individually call me or email me or, or whatever, if there's something that's not clear or. There's some research traditionally, you know, uh, you know, Greg had said, well. Had started asking questions about the sizes and what kind of power generated, which I think is a really good place to start. Um, that and some definitions, I maybe round that out and uh. You know, just chip away the other, the other items, but I think so maybe looking at maps and uh, maybe everyone visiting that Audubon side, I have not had a chance to uh. Uh, to look at that myself either. But I think I have at least a little something to go on for, for the next, for the next meeting, if, if the board wants to move on from this subject, maybe touch on the next. Ordinance or.
Yeah, I mean.
Unless you want me to do some more sort of bu- background stuff on this, but.
No, I, I mean, I think that it would be great for us to, you know, have some time in the. Before our next meeting to cover maps. And the zoning, what's, you know, what are the purposes of each of the zones, yes, Hershey?
So, I'm sorry, you can finish, you can.
Oh.
Finish and, then I'll go.
Um, and, you know, and. You know, tackle maps and talking about that next time, but also I um, was wondering, Ken, if you have. Um, any, any resources that would be helpful for us to look at in terms of like glare? And roadways and whatnot?
I do, I do, uh, majority of the stuff that we dealt with was FA, the guidelines were. Were quite a bit different than the public world, cause we. FA likes to draw defined setbacks from, from the structural grid of the airport, so it was really easy for us to just say. This is in the oncoming path. And we needed outside of that, anything within that needs to have a study and have anti-glare. Uh, film on it, qualify for such and such, right, so. We have an advisory circular that lays out a lot of that stuff to begin with, so when we did our own. It was more or less drawing the lines. Setting, setting apart areas and then we had our, our object free zone, so I took a look. I went down two thirty. I went down two thirty-six and route four midday and morning just to get an idea. I don't come this way often. I never really looked to see where the sun was covering my eyes. But, uh. There is a couple of concerns, but, uh, within this, we've got a line of sight. And, uh, and setbacks. So it, it kind of covers a lot of it anyway. And the only mild concerns are. Route four, a golf course. And I don't think they're ever going to say, hey, let's throw away our thriving business and put up panels on the golf course. So.
I don't know.
I don't see it happening in the two areas that I saw that would have been concerned from our point of view, from, from the airport point of view. The only thing I would say as far as aviation FAA, do you guys do medevac? That might be a concern to have a, take a look at. You, you don't want the pilots getting a glare back and I don't know how your oncoming path is in that area. That's about it. Uh, two thirty-six and route four. Very minor concern at all. And if you stick by the setbacks and the, and the, uh, uh. Non-line of sight, he's already got in there. Should be good. We'll just check on, on our landing pad and that's it.
Awesome.
Fabulous.
And I really appreciate it.
Yeah, FAA sign off, I think is, you know, if it's nowhere near anything. Then, but I think asking for an FAA sign off isn't ridiculous.
I just, I think if they're, if they're all pointed towards the sun.
I have a quick question. Hey, David, as you dig into this, it, why is it not allowed in R five? Is one of my questions, because that's the only N in table A. Did I see that correctly? That's a little counterintuitive. I mean, was it the R five lobby? Do we have some R fivers on, on, on the meeting?
R five Agamemnonius though.
What?
R five might be Agamemnonius.
R five is rural. It's like the way, it's the, you know, north, south Berwick, I like to call it. So.
Lot of sewer facility in the, in the red ones areas.
I don't know. I just, it, it seems to me of all the places, maybe that would be a good place to put him is where there's, you know, a lot of open land and not a lot of stuff going on. But, you know.
It's meant to restrict development.
It is.
Okay, does it, are there any last comments on solar before we move on?
I just would like to add, Joe, I mean, or Joe, Dave, do you understand, like, do you have enough information from us? To kind of put something together?
Yeah, I, I think I do, but I also would appreciate, uh, more feedback. I, I only got feedback from a couple of members. Um, and so if I could get people breathing through and if there's a section, you just go, agree a hundred percent, that's great. Uh, some people may not want to talk about it in public. I don't know. I, but at least if I get the ideas from different folks, I can put it in the saying, these are the issues that came up and why. Because there's a, you know, there's a lot of different issues that this, this thing touches.
Okay, so moving on to our next agenda item. From bottom to top is the medical marijuana, registered caregivers, home occupation question. Um, let me just, I'm going to bring it up on my screen. Or David, can you bring it up in this and share it?
Yeah, I'm hoping that the one that I just pulled up is, uh, perhaps didn't have spell check on it, but. Let's see, hold on, let me try to share this with, I'm like, I already, particularly it's not spelled that way. So. Let's see. All right, am I on there showing you now? And there's a particularly is, is glaring red at you? Did you see that?
Yep.
Okay, we're on the same page then. Okay, so similar to, uh, the solar farms. The town council, uh, this, this actually came up, I should say, uh, start from the beginning. The town council, uh, asked the board to look at where commercial growing marijuana growing. Uh, activities would be allowed in town or should be allowed in town. The planning board looked at that, came up with some standards for that and also limited those to the, uh, industrial districts. Sort of in a, in a nutshell, one of the important things in that. Um, was, uh, let's see. One that happened is there was a discussion about what is. What would we, what would trigger someone growing, say, from their house? Or when they suddenly become a commercial use. And the definition at that time. That, uh, for someone who read, uh, let's see. This is a whole definition right here. So let's see. Didn't highlight for me, sorry. There we go. So that is the definition in the town's, uh, land use code definition section. And that, if you look online, it is actually in the new ordinance section. When we first opened the zoning ordinance and it says new ordinances, which we've got to fix that, how it's labeled there. So in the definition section of the ordinance that is online. You will not see this definition, but it was adopted by the town council back a few months ago. So, um, we'll need to do something like that. But three or more, uh, three or more, uh. Registered caregivers was the key to that. So that, when the people doing caregiving out of a home, growing in their home. We knew that as a starting point, it was less than, less than three people. Allowed to grow in one location or it's considered a commercial operation in town's land use code. The other thing that came up is in that definition, it also said, the. The maximum size of medical marijuana cultivation growing facility on a single lot of record should be twenty-five hundred square feet of cultivation area. So that was the limit that was put on industrial zones if someone wanted to do a meta, medical marijuana cultivation growing facility. So with that, the rationale was, okay, so we've got less than three people. And it has to be less than twenty-five hundred square feet. We also know that the state limits people to five hundred square feet. So if you have only two people allowed maximum, and they're each allowed five hundred square feet. That really starts as being where your cap would sort of be. So, um, that was, that was some of the, uh. I went through the constraints of the, of, of the current ordinances in relation to this one. Again, the town council gave an assignment to the planning board. And, uh, I read the whole, we would like to ensure the following items are addressed and trust the planning board for address. In the way they see fit, and that is hours of operations, square footage restrictions, odor mitigation, traffic control. Control considerations like appointment only and or no drive-through. Uh, lighting signage, any new necessary definitions that are needed or any other definitions that may be triggered by, by this amendment. Uh, the memorandum that I sent out also, uh, included some notes. And, uh, I, there's another underlying consensus is sort of the key moving forward. And, um. I tried to list some of the, uh, so currently, this is the current ordinance, minor home occupations. And when we get to major home occupations, there is a definition there, excuse me. There is a section under major home occupations that was quote reserved for future uses in there. Some of the uses that are in the minor definitions for home occupations are also transferred down. But if the board wants, is this going to be reviewed as a home occupation? And there are pros and cons. Um, so that's one item that we should talk about in more detail. And then just going through, I tried to address some of those. Uh, issues that the, that the town council had raised. For the board to address. And I tried to put some standards and when I could, I took sections of the ordinance. There are, uh, excuse me, sections of the land use code, the zoning ordinance. And, and applied them in here. So I, I tried to make, make things as consistent from one ordinance, uh, to the next or by reference to that. So I came up with a couple of things. And one of the things is really what level of review do we want to get it? And I, I keep thinking about this since I, I've sent it out to folks. And I think the original idea was to buy the, buy the council was, yeah, let's look at these things. So they don't become these huge commercial, uh, lots. But also let people, you know, grow minimum amounts and, and have a business or, or, or what have you. So. The more I think about it, a home occupation isn't a bad way to, uh, approach it. Um, but again, we can have that debate or, or, and the board can tell me to write it any way you guys want it. So I underlined a number of things here. And then also I just tried, I kept some of these things that were already in the ordinance. And I put a couple of, uh, a couple of items in blue here that sort of said, do we want to regulate this? What about X, Y, and Z? And parking and, and things like that. And the real question is. If it comes down to sort of retail sales, are there going to be allowed retail sales from the house? You can ban that. I sent around today a, a note that I'd gotten back from the town's attorney. Uh, so that's some stuff also to flush out. So rather than be boring you with anything else. I, I, I sort of wanted to get an idea if I'm on the right sort of direction on this or if. Where the, where the board would like me to go with this.
Um, David, could you just bring up Phil's comments for us to look at?
I, I can't, hold on one second. Let me.
You know, I feel like the big question, the big question that we were all debating. At our last meeting was this home occupation, if they should, if they should be able to sell. And. I've thought about it a lot. And as torn as I am, I just like, I can't, I don't know if I can really say that. Uh, major home occupation makes sense when we said no. To caregiver stores. In those areas. So I, I personally feel like after reviewing everything. It does, it only makes sense to me that we do it as a minor home occupation, which would then. You know, limit the size. So then all of a sudden, like one of the things that Greg brought up was about production. And like then actually making and doing all of this stuff that you do after you grow it. It limits it five hundred square feet on the prime, in the primary residence or on in the, uh, uh. Building that's nearby on the property. Um, no sign, it would be no signs and they wouldn't necessarily be able to sell from. From their home in a normal business way. That being said, people have the internet now. People can advertise on the internet if, if they want to tell people where they are. But I just feel like I would rather us have site, site plan reviews still. But for minor home occupations that. Limit, that limit the size, um, within the principal building or a secondary building. So, you know, for making stuff, but also, you know. Although I, I hate the idea of preventing somebody from selling from their, from their own home. I feel like we've already made that decision. And that's why we made the overlay zone, if that makes sense. But Greg, you have, you had your hand up first, so I'll let you.
You should do it, Hershey. I guess a couple of things. Um, I just want to, you know. Go back, it, it, you know, the whole retail sale thing. I would, uh, Dave is going to bring up Phil's comment and I think you're, that's going to be item number three. Cause that actually raises a lot more questions for me than it does answers. So honestly, I don't know if we're going to come to a. Uh, uh, a decision on that tonight. However, I guess I would still advocate. There, there's two things, the minor home occupation and major home occupation. Major home occupation requires the site plan review. Now, if the original intent was to look at this industry, this business as kind of a home occupation. I'm going to go a step further and maybe say that the intent was if they meet the requirements of a home occupation. Then it should be just approved by the code enforcement officer. And if we classify it as a major home occupation, I don't think that's really what we're looking to do, getting into. What at the end of the day is a smaller scale, you know, the issue happening out in any zone in town. Minor home occupation. I, I, I'd like, but I don't know if that itself is the appropriate place. And what I said last week was, should we consider classifying this as its own use? Registered caregiver home occupation. And it's one set of standards. It gives the code enforcement officer a single set of clear directions. The ordinances as they exist now for minor and major as they exist right now. Where, where they're, they're, they're really light on any type of standard to begin with. So my concern is if we say it's going to be a minor home occupation. One, we're going to have to open that up and really look at how we regulate them. And, and are we affecting any other minor home occupations inadvertently? And because they're light on the standards. Where does, where does the pendulum land in the terms of, when does it go from a minor home occupation to a major home occupation? It's going to become somewhat subjective because there's a lack of standards at this point in time. Which from, from my view, creates a problem down the road for the town in the sense of. Hey, we think it's a minor home occupation and well, no, we think it's a major home occupation. And now we got people going at each other's throats and I don't know where, where the appropriate line is for that. I mean, I'm, I'm happy to modify and move some of those provisions to minor home occupation. Cause in a minor home occupation, the code enforcement officer approves it. Uh, again, I'm just.
Site plan reviews.
What's that?
I believe you can still, you can still require a site plan review.
For minor home occupation?
Yeah.
Now, under the ordinance, no, under the. Well, I don't know about site, well, no, it's pretty clear. Major home occupation requires the site plan. Minor does not. I don't know, Joe, can Joe answer that question?
Minor does not require a site plan. Major site plan, if it doesn't meet the definition of the major site plan, it goes to planning board.
Is there a clean line there, Joe? Like another word? Yeah, okay.
I was just going to say, when I look at it in the minor home occupation, it has a size limitation. Major occu- home occupation does not have a size limitation.
So. Greg, are you all, uh, Greg, are you?
Yeah, yeah, I, I guess I just wanted to state that case. I, I think there may be merit in having us look at a completely new category. And getting rid of this major versus minor home and just create a registered caregiver home occupation. That way it's one item and very clear. That's my own thought.
Hershey?
So I, I don't disagree with Greg or you, Betsy, that it, I find the regulations a little confusing, um, with some amount of overlap. And it's hard, it's more like you sort of like establish something at your house and decide which category you fit in. As opposed to saying, what does the code say I have to do in following a code? It's sort of a little bit reversed in the way it's supposed to work. And that I find, you know, confusing to begin with. But all that being said, um, there are pieces of each of them, I think, which have merit. And whether we mix and match or carve out exceptions, the way David has supplied for major home occupations. I don't really care. I, I, I care about sort of the specifics, whichever they end up being in. Whichever they end up being in. So and it seems to me the major home occupation has more of the specifics that I agree with than the minor one. And let me just go over a few. One is, I don't think everybody is growing, you should have to come in for site plan review because partly I think it's an invasion of privacy. And that there's a reason we don't have lists of where these people are. And so I don't think people should have to come before the planning board for that reason alone. Um, let me just point out how successful this is and that no one has come before the planning board for a major home occupation that I'm sure out of. Our whole town, there are many people doing exactly that who never come before us. So it's not, you know, it's not really a. It's not really successful in the way it's it's, you know, carried out to begin with. So I I'm not sure what to make of that except to say, I just think I, you know, nobody wants to sit here and do planning review on stuff like this anyway. And so that would be one thing I sort of don't want, but while still having it be in major. The other part is, you know, lots of people run little businesses in the town. We have questrian facilities where people board horses. We have, you know. All sorts of other stuff that comes under this definition, people who fix cars and rehab cars and. People who, you know, have law offices and all sorts of other things. And we don't restrict the size of their barn or their. You know, offices or I don't, I don't see why we need to do that. The state, first of all, if we're gonna limit it to two growers. The state already restricts the size of the canopy to 500 square feet. If they want to put in some other hundred square feet or so or whatever to process it, I don't. It it's not my business, I feel. That's, you know, that's their land. As long as they're within the setbacks and everything else, I'm not gonna tell them how big their office gets to be or their barn or the space they're gonna work in. Um, and since the land, since the state regulates this already, then we already have a built in control over how big it's going to be. So the other thing is, you know, these have been legal since nineteen ninety eight. That's. Let me do the math in my head, twenty four years. We have had registered, did I get that right? Registered caregivers in our town growing marijuana without any major problems until now. Right until we've had one real outlier that's been a problem. And whether it's an enforcement problem or it, you know, whatever happens with that, it's really hard to parse. But I also feel with proper enforcement, this just, it it should not be a problem. And let's fix a few things out there that are a problem, which is, I think. People coming and going night and day and lots of lights and, you know, and outsized buildings. Um, so I'm okay with fixing all those things and regulating it. I think since we're going for licensure, that will be the stick. In terms of making sure people follow the rules around these things, but other than that, I I just don't think we need this level of regulation. You know, they just, it hasn't been a problem. We have a lot of people, we don't have a lot of people we're talking about, maybe. I think there's twenty three in town of those, very few of them actually are growing in town. And they don't seem to have been a nuisance to anybody. So I don't, you know, I just like to get this over with.
I know, there are, I will say, Hershey, that there are, um, there are, uh. Setbacks for like menor piles at Barnes from property.
There are, there are.
Yeah, so. Something about David?
No, that's, and that's fine. Oh, and I'll say one more thing. I, you know, the model for this, when the state sort of formed this before we really got to dealing with it. Was that they grow it and process most of it wherever they process it, I guess, but, you know, people come and get it. And whether you call that retail or not, I don't know. But if we eliminate that, that one thing, you've just killed all this business. I mean, none of these people will be here then, right? You've put them out of business. This is this, this is the model for how they grow and what they do with it. Some of them sell it to other people, like to other facilities. But since we've limited, you know, to three medical marijuana retail stores. You know, for the majority of these growers, people come and pick up their product. And whether we do it by appointment or, you know, and we limit the hours, I think that's not any different than anybody else's use. So. I think it's, this is a lot more like other people's home occupation and businesses than we are allowing for. And in that sense, I don't, I think we should. Do some more definition, but leave it at that. Okay, I'll shut up now. I'm done.
David?
Yeah, I was, I was, uh, I'll I'll try and feed off of all the comments, but, um. Yeah, the 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 more I thought about site plan review kind of thing, it it seemed excessive to me. Uh, when I think of really what we're trying to regulate, which. In general terms, doesn't seem to have been a problem in ten. So what the hope, I I think what it's really gonna boil down to is. Having some regulations. I don't think people are gonna come, you know, Hershey's not gonna wander enough the street and say. You know, I'd like to grow some marijuana in my basement for myself. It's just not gonna happen.
In my basement, are you kidding?
Well, I, we're talking about probably the town's gonna know about it. When a problem occurs and I see a problem occurring most likely because of odor. Uh, excessive traffic, um, really, those, those are the two. I personally don't know how much yield five hundred square feet. Or, you know, and they they say of of canopy or whatever, I I don't know how much that produces or. Or how much people would smoke. I don't know what that does. So I, it, you know, it's a little bit lost on me, but. I do think with some of the state laws, we can, uh, it can be regulated. And I did pull up. The email that I got from the town attorney earlier, if you wanted me to share that.
Uh, yes.
Okay, now hopefully it's in my email, uh, so so hopefully you guys can all read it. So let me do this. And find my email, that's it right here. Okay, so I had sent, uh, uh, Phil, who's town's attorney. I'd sent him a draft of this because I want to make sure that. The the town isn't gonna end up adopting something that is contrary to the state. Now, as we've talked about before, the town can restrict uses or restrict things about. These these growers and things like that. So what I did is I I sent the ordinance to him. And I showed him the caregiver definition and he made a couple of. Suggestions about maybe how we better define, uh, define that. You should have all gotten this in your email earlier today. As I did and, um. There was, he's pointing out in number two, whether the new major, uh, home occupation section, some, some sections are new and should be underlined. And that's really when when I was sort of cutting and pasting kind of thing. So that's something I can definitely fix. Uh, the more, most important one probably is regarding sales. And he says, uh, regarding sales, you could specifically prohibit and or any retail sales. From the site of a home occupation. A caregiver retail store is a quote opt-in category under the main medical marijuana act. So South Berwick has not opted in and amendment would not be allowed anyway. Uh, anyway, and this at this point, but you may want to make, uh, the it clear in the section, excuse me, if I could read in these, we're sorry, it's been a long day.
So, but David, we if we have opted in because we have medical marrow retail stores, right? And I think we're not talking about, when we say a retail store, we mean an actual storefront, right? Which nobody wants to see in it in a neighborhood that isn't commercial, right? Nobody wants you to, even though, you know, we have farm stands and other people have other businesses and maybe. Have something that looks like an office that you go to. No one wants to see that. I think we all agree with that, right? But, you know, when you say retail, you know, that's different from a store downtown. Right? But these people have to have a way to be able to sell it. And that's what the state of Maine intended when they made registered caregivers, right? Yep. So, I, you know, I just don't see, you know, it'd be like having somebody who has a a ta, you know, I don't know, a tax accountant. Who does your taxes, but doesn't give you the paperwork at the end. That just seems like odd home occupation to me, so.
Greg?
So I guess I said, Dave, earlier, after reading that email, uh, kind of a series of questions. And that I know no one can really answer right now and it's maybe more directed at Phil and. And maybe there are more statements than questions, but. Does, I I can read that particular item a couple of different ways and I'm not really sure how to read it. You know, I mean, I I'm making the assumption that the attorney knows that we have opted in. Because we have the medical storefronts, so I, you know. So I saw his response to be a little bit odd, which made me question, is there a whole different separate category here? Uh, for a caregiver retail store, something that I'm that we're not aware of. Uh, or is the caregiver retail sale the same as a the storefront? Are are they one and of the same? I just found his email to be a little bit confusing. And if we have a medical storefront where we said, hey, you can sell your product in the storefront over here. Does that now by default say for this ordinance? Because you said it can had the retail has to happen over here, by default, you can't have retail. Uh, as a function of a home occupation. And I know, I'm not looking for an answer. I just, I I looked at that and it kind of raised a. A a a question for me, you know, again, you know that I'm not in favor of retail sales. So my interpretation would be wonderful, but I don't know if that is, you know.
Right, I, the the way I read, and I actually just had it up again, then I pulled your email up. So I'm sort of popping back and forth here. Um, but I took it as, so, let's see, let's. Hold on, I'm trying to find that one, so I can pull it back up here. I'm doing here somewhere. Sorry, I was trying to try to pull up, uh, Phil's email again, but why, what I took away from it is the planning board could say no sales.
Okay, so.
Um, I I I, that's the way I I I read it, uh, and I wish I had the exact language. I'll keep looking for it, but, um.
I'm gonna put it up. I think I have it up.
If, yeah, if you had, uh. I think it's, yeah, I think I just found it again too. So if you, if you have it, Hershey, that'd be great.
Sure, hold on one sec.
Is that it? You got it?
There you go. Yeah, so item three was, uh, was regarding sales, you could, you could specifically prohibit and or. Any retail sales from the site of a home occupation. So that would say to me, you could just say, no retail sales, period.
I guess I'm reading the second part, a caregiver retail store. Is an opt-in category under the medical marijuana act. So if South Berwick. Has not opted in, which we know we have. Such an establishment would not be allowed anyway. At, right, we at this point, but you may want to make this clear. I guess I'm just finding that confusing and maybe I'm overthinking it.
Right.
We, and, and also, Greg, I agree that it it, he says a retail store. And I actually think that a medical marijuana retail store has a different definition from a registered caregiver selling from their property, I guess. So I don't know if that's true or not, but that's a good question to follow with Phil. Yo.
Yeah, I I I I think we may want to seek just a little bit of clarity. Is there a difference between a caregiver retail? Versus a medical storefront like our ordinance says?
The David yell, uh.
Yeah, I can get some clarification on that and and really it's. It's really when that transaction takes place and. Where I start looking at it is. Okay, I I have a tax attorney, actually we do a lot, uh, pretty much online these days. But, um, I have a tax attorney and at the end of the day, I would go in there and she would go, here's my taxes. I'd go over the taxes or my wife would go over the taxes and say, sign here. And then we'd go over the taxes, we'd sign them, we'd give her a check for her services. You know, she's working out of an office, but I have had tax attorneys who've worked out of their home. Is that transaction taking place? I I I think the real thing is. If someone comes in, uh, uh, how how I imagine the ordinance working, the more and more I think about it is. You could ask for a basic site plan. I'm not talking topography and all of this stuff. But if someone wanted to grow marijuana at their house, they. Uh, as as a caregiver, let's, let's be sure here. Um, and they wanted to put up a barn, we should talk about accessory buildings and things like that. What's big, what's too big? Again, you've got that state regulation already in place. But it's really the the traffic and the odor, I think it's gonna come down to. I mean, if someone's, I I maybe, you know, I I'm probably in my neighborhood, I live at a slant, maybe not. Maybe one of my neighbors is growing pot in their basement, giving it or selling it to their friends. I have no idea. But I think if you start looking at traffic generation. Um, I I mentioned to Hershey, uh, before that, uh, home daycare just opened up around the street. I mean, now they don't come down my street, they turn right before, but. I had, there is a definite increase in traffic. Now, she's a home daycare, she can have up to twelve people. As a home daycare or the main state law, how much traffic does that generate? And yes, they have to go through a planning board process and I I I really don't think we're getting there. I don't. You know, you you could say you're not allowed sales, but. You know, how can you prove it? I think if you start having a really what is a retail operation where people are coming and going in all hours and day and night. Um. But, you know, I think that's a real, I think that is a problem because it's no longer functioning as a residential unit. But if this sort of ancillary sales goes on and it's, you know, again, I don't really know how much. Five hundred square feet grows, five hundred square feet to me is a pretty sizable area. You know, that's, but I don't know what that yields after drying or whatever.
And if there's two, there's two people, it can be up to a thousand.
Right.
We have to say that in the ordinance, though, Betsy.
We, but we, so for home occupations, we don't, there's already a size restriction for minor. And we don't restrict in other ways, like, you know, there's all sorts of. Other things allowed in residential areas and home occupations where people can build a building, a barn, sheds, all sorts of things. We have a woodworker behind my house was a huge shed and then two or three other outbuildings to put his equipment in. And, you know, it doesn't impact me, it doesn't bother me. Uh, you know, he saw things there occasionally, but I don't know why this is so different when it comes to marijuana. I mean, I sort of do and I sort of don't. Since there's been a problem on Godgood Road, I think licensure is the big difference. And I think that will give us a way to deal with people and enforce things when there are problems. But, uh, once again, there hasn't been this ongoing problem in our town about this except for one outlier. So I I don't know what we're trying to fix. So, you know, I I'm big on regulation.
Hershey, I'm happy to entertain a motion that, you know, to make this kind of decision on. If we make it a separate, if we leave it. Cause right now, I feel like we're we're about to go in circles. So I just wanna either, I wanna, I want us to sit on it till the next meeting. Or I want a motion to be made and for for us to take a vote and see where everybody li- is lying at this point. But actually, you know, before that, we have not heard from Bernal or Ken. And would either of you guys like to? Speak, please?
This is great with a big screen, we get to watch the show. It's, uh. I'm just learning, I've had your feed in this, this particular item for quite a while, so, um. I I see both sides, I see exactly where Greg is landing and, uh. I I would like to see. Yeah, like I said before, last meeting, my concern is for the neighbor. Not so much the individual and the person doing the business. It's it's to to protect the neighbor from the, from the burden and, uh. Whether it's setbacks, site, site review. That's my biggest concern, I'd say. I I don't think limiting the size, if the state's already has regulations in place for that. Um, I don't think limiting the size is the actual way to do it. I think it would be the, the individual, uh, residents. More or less, the personal.
Great, thank you, Ken. Bernal, do you have?
I I do have a question. I wasn't gonna, I wasn't gonna let it go here right now, but since I've got the floor. Uh, what? What is the significance of the number of people? That that this is based on? Why is, why is that in there?
Because um, you're legally allowed to have five hundred square feet per registered caregiver. And so what we said is, we don't want people. Uh, a family, say there's a husband, a wife and two sons. That all live at that house and now all four of them can have five hundred square feet and now all of a sudden there's one property with two thousand square feet of canopy. So what what we did was we said, well, two people can be on one property. Having the five hundred square feet, but anything more than that, we need to review it because that's just too large of a. Larger of a canopy. Does that make sense?
I hear this five hundred foot ratio is a state thing.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Greg.
Yeah, so I I'm gonna go back and and I guess for purposes of this conversation, because you're right, I think we're gonna kind of start. Going in some circles here. The town council gave us a set of restrictions and before, maybe the way we want to talk about this is before we even talk about home. You know, what level of home occupation, minor or major, or completely separate, maybe we just need to kind of resolve a couple other key items. That it doesn't really matter where it goes, because it's going to be the same depending on where we put it. And I think that one of the big issues, of course, is the 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 sale of the item. That's garnered a lot of conversation. You know, there's delivery, there is uh, appointment only, then there's the on premise retail sale. Uh, and the other item, of course, is the size. And so, you know. I want to have that conversation about the accessory structure and and I would go as far as saying. That I think it needs to be limited to a thousand square feet cumulatively uh, for the entire lot. Uh, so you know, that that's. That to me would meet the town council's charge, uh, you know, that a thousand square feet cumulatively on the lot. That includes all the accessory structures. I gotta go with my cord, hang on a minute.
Some sort of background music during like the intermission. But is it one of the, is it a fake backdrop or is it a real?
Yeah, that's a good question.
You start doing that.
I have everybody looking for it, don't know where.
So that can be a problem.
Yeah, 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 wind up under someone's bed. So I'm just, you know, I think if we can resolve, I'm going to need the. Other case that is in here. The power strip. You can have other conversation while I do this, you don't have to wait for me.
Well, so can I, can I, well, let's take, let's take Greg's approach to tick things off. So we all agree that there had to be some restriction on hours and I I don't remember what it was, eight to six or eight to seven, right? I think we we came up with something that sounded like sort of normalish business hours of a little. An hour on each end of maybe if you're working nine to five, which right? So that's gone. We already have a light ordinance, so I don't really think we need something that discusses light. I think we discussed the signage, there's already some. Restrictions around signage already. Um, I I personally feel like odor mitigation is is only an issue when it affects in a butter and it's become a real problem. And then I think there should be regress and you should be able to put in, have to put in a. A system only if your butter is affected by it and complains for sure. Um, but asking somebody to put, you know, something in their hoop house or a barn or basement when there isn't a problem and you're on twenty acres seems a little silly to me. So I I would say there has to be some worrying that that there has to be regress if it becomes a problem. And then I guess, you know, size wise, I would just say, you know, if you live on a twenty acre property and you go down a dirt road and you can't be seen from the street. You would have planted in a barn that's fifteen hundred square feet, I couldn't care less. You know, and have other outbuildings. We have neighbors all around us who have barns and sheds and other types of outbuildings and accessory dwelling units that have gone up. And I just don't see how they impact anybody. The neighborhood is not, you know. It's, you know, it's rural life and I just, you know, you need more than a thousand square feet if you're allowed a thousand square feet of canopy. You need to be able to walk around, you need to have a table, you need to, you know, you're you're basically trying to just, you know, it's on the matter of existence and that doesn't seem quite fair to me.
Greg, do you have your charger now?
Yeah, I do.
Charge ahead.
So I'm not really sure, you know, where where we'll go with this, but I'm hoping we can kind of concentrate on this. I have a little bit of a different take. And and why I think we need to to, you know, look at a size restriction, you know, my view of the medical cultivation piece or the industrial stuff. Uh, you know, limits to three or more caregivers, not in their primary residence. And so to me, that means that. We can have a lot more than just two caregivers in every other zone in town. I think we can have three, four and five. Which Betsy gets to your issue that you were mentioning before. Uh, you know, twenty five hundred square feet. Again, I I go back and I look at. This is a business, they get licensed from the state to sell marijuana. And I look at the compatible use within a residential neighborhood. And I'm not going to disagree with what you're saying, Hershey, there is a difference. If you're forty acres and you're in the middle of your forty acres. I don't know how we regulate that. Uh, we can't do setbacks. Because setbacks aren't going to work in a lot of areas in town. Um, so it really comes down to the only way to regulate really is the size restriction.
But I don't, I don't, what what are we regulating exactly? What is the need to regulate? The state regulates them, it up up the wazoo, you would believe the amount of stuff the states regulates. What are we trying to regulate? Just that someone can put a barn on their property, everybody can do that. And there are setbacks in place in Arizona code. There are already setbacks about how big something can be and where you can put it and minimum maximum. There's a lot of standards we already have around zoning and building that are universal. That have nothing to do with whether we're regulating caregivers. I think what we're trying to regulate are the ways they have already become a nuisance on one place on a gunquit road. So let's do that and let's like move on.
Well, I I I I guess I'm not entirely sharing your. Train of thought on that and it's not a problem until it is. And so we're being asked to do something from the town council with a charge. And come up with size limitations. And, you know, having listened to those conversations from the town council, that's what they're going to be expecting. And so, again, I'm just going to go back and. You know, I'm I'm happy to hear from other people. Uh, and then before I put it into a motion, but I would say for purposes of moving on. You know, for conversation, I would say again, a thousand square feet cumulatively per lot.
Why? Why a thousand square feet? Why not a hundred and, why not fifteen hundred square feet? Like, where are they supposed to work? And where are they supposed to store things and where are they? I, you know, I I just, other home occupations don't have this limit on them. The guy with the garage down the street, put on a second, he did, no. You know.
Right there.
You know, they're, but they're allowed, if we're allowing two caregivers, we're saying that they can have a thousand square feet of canopy. And that means they're going to probably need a little more room than a thousand square feet, no? Just practically speaking, no?
Well, I mean, you know, so again, I'm 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 throwing that out there for conversation and it's a lot of different number, you know. I don't know what you're thinking.
Yeah, I mean, I would like. I mean, I would say either fifteen hundred or two thousand.
Yeah, I think that's getting, I think that's getting a little bit large.
That's.
Well, if you think about if they have a thousand square feet of canopy, that also gives them a thousand square feet for any materials. That they have tables, like space to work.
So so at what point does the. Does the principal use of the structure become overlooked if you start seeing two thousand square feet of? If a home occupation is supposed to be incidental to the primary use, which is residential. You know, at what point does that overtake that? And so, you know, we have limitations as a guide here. Under at least a minor home occupation, it says twenty five percent of the gross floor area or five hundred square feet. You know, again, if you can do that within a principal structure, more power to you, but. If you're going to have someone building a two or three or four bay garage. And having the canopy in there along with the, you know, production and some, you know, processing of marijuana products. That that's that become perhaps potentially a lot more intrusive on neighbors. And so, again, I look at the smaller, the less likely we're, we have to worry about any of the odor or the traffic. Or those other things that can potentially, you know. Get out of control.
But all, but all of this is already limited by a five hundred foot canopy. And two growers were allowing, and that's it. I mean, it already has a set limit. No one's going to build a five thousand square foot building when they don't need it. It costs money. Or, you know, or they're going to use an existing building on the property. Most people don't have the money to put out capital. Um, to, you know, to build new facilities when they're not industrial sized, right? These are. These are people who are just growing on their property, right? So, you know, a barn, a barn is like forty thousand dollars, right, to build a little barn with maybe six horse stalls, right? What's the size of our barn, please? Forty five, forty? Thirty six by thirty six. So we, you know, that would be like, I don't know, fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars to build. I don't know anybody who's going to build something like that. You know, and you know, we put a horse on our property that's thirty six by thirty six and it's pretty substantial, but. You know, it's not impacting anybody. I just, I just, this issue over how big it's going to get or what size it's going to be is just. To me, it's not the thing we should be thinking about worrying about regulating. Like, I think David is correct that, you know, odor is an issue and can be and can really annoy a butters. And, you know, neighbors are going to be really troubled by traffic if that becomes an issue, though I haven't heard of that being an issue and, you know. People get to build things on their property. You're not allowed to sort of have a taking of what they can and cannot build if it's within the code.
Right, but we're talking about business, the business happening. So if I'm going to build a garage, that's a little bit different than me building a garage. And putting a business in that, operating a business out of it.
But we have, but people do run businesses all through residential properties here. We have a guy down the street who has a huge drywall operation and has a huge building. He got to build an industrial building on his property, whether I thought it was a great idea or not, I can't say, but. He was allowed to do that, not a big impact on the neighbors, not sure if he was happy about it, not in character maybe, but. You know, he's running a business in a residential neighborhood.
That I guess that's why I'm kind of getting into a conver, you know, the conversation of do. Should we have this be completely separate from the minor and the major? You know.
I don't, I don't, I just don't see why we would. If if the point is to regulate the things that we anticipate or we think will be a problem or are a problem, there's no reason we can't just stick in extra rules. In the home occupation section. I, you know, why, why, so I start from scratch and rewrite it. So I, maybe the motion we want to make is to decide. Which direction that will be in, whether we have a new separate section, a minor home occupation with modifications or or a major one with modifications. Right? And like I say.
Let me, let me ask a question on that, if I can put someone on the spot. Joe, what's your thought on that? You're going to be doing it.
Well, like you said, it, it's how it's worded, i- if it's defined. You know, the proper way and the lawyers can look at it and have to, you know, put their two cents in. And if there's no gray areas, then it shouldn't be a big deal. And I I would rather have it on a separate. Article anyway, based on the fact that now we know that that's what it is. It's not a minor home occupation, it's not this, it's growing of medical marijuana for caregivers. That's the way I look at it.
I'm. Just taking everything in from whatever. There's a lot. I will say that I'm I'm leaning to a separate, a separate one. So I think at this point, I'll entertain a motion for, you know, for a decision. That being said, if we can't, if we don't have votes for a decision, then I say we table it and we come back to it at our next meeting.
Can we hear more? Does anyone else want to talk? You know, the Bernal and. Ken?
I would say at this point that uh, there's still some. Noodling that has to be done almost before we come to a motion. Think like this a little bit more. Before it's actually put down and read in and then. Get a motion and pass a motion on this and have to change it later or whatever.
Well, the point, the point of the motion is just is really to see, I mean, are we all? Do we actually have a consensus or do we not? And if we don't, if we don't have a vote, you know, if we don't have a second, then we know we can table it. If that makes sense, does anybody else?
Well, let me just, when when I say kind of developing its own separate one, I mean, everything that Dave has created just gets copied and pasted over. With just simply a new title, I, we're not starting from scratch, we can use a lot, most everything that he's created again. I think the bigger issues are the sales. And I haven't heard any, a lot of conversation on that, really. Then, you know, I'm willing to listen, but then again, you know, the overall size limitation. If we think it's two, then it's a thousand square feet, what do we want to do about all that extra stuff? You know, I get the walkway issue and what you're saying. I understand what you're saying with that, Hershey.
You know, people, people can build a barn on their property of a certain size, whether they're growing marijuana or not. I just don't see why this is different. It just seems like we're throwing a lot of regulation onto a problem that isn't a problem. And, you know, we can anticipate all sorts of problems that we want to regulate in town and we don't make up new zoning code around it. There's been a problem in a gunquit road, let's talk about what the problems were, let's fix those problems and, you know, let's get it done.
Well, I don't know if we can fix a gunquit road. I think we need to look at this proactively and say.
Right, and I'm saying whatever the problems were that people didn't like about that, let's talk about what those problems were and fix those problems so we don't have them again. Whatever that issue is, so it's, it was, it was traffic. It was to some extent, you know, signage, I heard, there were signs that had to get taken down, there's lights all night. There's a lot of coming, coming and going, and a lot of that actually, we have in our code and we can fix now in this. So.
Oh, I'm just gonna.
Knowing with the size limitation.
Stop everybody there for a second. This is where I feel like we're at and, you know, David, you can can tell me how you, if you, if you agree or not. But I feel like until we we either need to decide. That it's going to be a minor, minor or major home occupation and we're sticking to the the table. For the, and the definitions and everything for that, or we need to make a separate one and really hash out. Those things that Hershey's talking about in terms of odor and traffic and consider size, which Greg, Greg wants to consider. Uh, and. Until we do that, I feel like we can't really move forward. I don't know, David, go ahead.
Yeah, I I was just gonna say, I I think there's some things I may be able to do to sort of help work through these things. And I, I agree with everything that's that's been said, I think that. I think the council and the board recognizes that there was a problem. And how could we prevent that from happening again? And also making sure that, you know, I. You know, protecting the people who live there and so we just need to sort of tighten this thing up, so it's it's not a retail store. It's, you know, it's, it's. You know, it's, you you, it is, you know, we need to treat it like it's, it's any other sort of home occupation. You might have people coming there. You might have people going there. Um, one town that I was working in with specifically said, you could not have any retail sales. This guy was a, I can't remember the name of it, it's got an official name, but he's the person you can take your gun to and you can sell it to him. And he can sell it to the third party sort of certifying, but cash was trading place, uh, exchanging places and that town, you know, said you can't do that. And wouldn't allow it, so.
I'd be for that, I'd be for that too, I'm sorry. I'd be for that. I'd be for that too. I'm sorry.
What? Money changing hands or just?
No, gun sales.
Okay, no. It's that whole money changing hands also. I think as with any home occupation that would come in, um, maybe I use some of the language that I've looked at as being a little bit, you know, site planned. When I was envisioning a site plan for a minor, uh, uh, this use, I was kind of thinking minor, uh, minor home occupation, but as part of that minor home occupation, frankly, for every deuce that wants to do a home occupation, um, would come in and they fill out sort of an application. They say, hey, here's what I'm interested in Joe doing. And Joe would look at it as a code officer and says, yeah, this meets the criteria for home occupation. Oh, you're a, you're a caregiver. You're gonna grow a little bit in your house. Here's the things we're gonna be worried about. Odor, people coming to your house to buy product. Um, it can't be a store, blah, blah, blah. And the person sort of signs their application. If they can fall within the criteria, it just gets approved at a, at a, at a staff level. I didn't envision any of these type of uses and, and maybe, I, I thought the purpose that, that, that directed that came from the, from the town council was, yeah, these things are out there. We should sort of look at regulations to see what we should or what the board should and should not allow. But really not get them into an overly regulatory process. Because once you're into an overly regulatory process, you're sort of going, well, you're a commercial use. Now someone's using their unused bathroom to grow marijuana or something for their home use, you know? Who cares frankly, but, you know? But when that starts getting into, I, I, I do see the concern with the size of an accessory structure. But I've also had people in my career who've said, I'm building a seven car garage. And you go, really? And then, you know, and sometimes there was a car collector and he actually built the seven car garage or eight or nine car garage, whatever it was, for a car collection. Then you think, okay, he, he moves out of his beautiful house. Someone else buys the property and they go, I don't have seven, you know, luxury Mercedes to show off. I'm gonna then do it. So, you know, accessory structures like Hershey said, you're allowed to build them. And you come in and say, I want to build something to hold all my kids ski do's and what have you. You're allowed to do that. And it's really, you know, really, I, to, to me, it's sort of the odor, traffic and the appearance of a residential home. You know, some of my neighbors have people coming and going all day. I, I don't leave the house a lot. I work from home as does my wife, so. We get an erring once or twice a week, but we don't also have people coming to our house very often, but if someone's constantly going, I can see how a neighborhood wouldn't like that. And I think the first, you know, protect the person who wants to do it, their identity, don't require major public hearing or any kind of thing on this type of thing. And really draft it that if a problem comes up, you have some ordinances where Joe goes, hey, I gotta complain about X, Y and Z. They're going to put in some kind of air filtration system and that should clear up the problems. It does, Joe never sees him again. He goes, thank you for making, fixing that problem.
So I'm gonna, I'm going to uh, say we table this until the next meeting and give everybody time to review again. Um, the documents. And we'll come back and hopefully be, someone can make a motion at our next meeting regarding how we wanted to clarify. Yes, Hershey.
So I, I assume though David is gonna take another pass at this, it sounds like.
Yes.
If, if, if that's what you'd like me to do, sure. I also welcome emails um, from everyone. But as a reminder, as a board member, if you are gonna send me comments on an item, uh, just send it directly to me. Do not copy the entire board because the board cannot be discussing items in writing or anything. You can talk to me directly, you can call Joe directly, you can call Amy. Or if a board member wants to maybe talk to another board member, but we just don't want to start a communication on this. So if you have comments and you just say, I do not want retail sales, that helps me. Or if you say, yes, you know, sort of a little retail on the side isn't a bad deal. As long as I get a feel for the collective feeling of the, the board, then I can put that into a, you know, I had three people who said, no way in heck retail sales. I had one person who says, who cares how much they grow or whatever. I, at least it helps be gauge where we're at. And, and I, I always have to say it, an option for the planning board also is, if this isn't a problem, you could always say, send it back to the town council and say, the planning board as a whole do not think this is a problem. Having come from the town council and I think as there's been so much debate amongst ourselves, I think it does need to be looked at. You know?
Okay. So with that being said, um, we're gonna.
My motion to adjourn.
Are there any, are there any member comments that do not have to do with medical marijuana?
I'm gonna start smoking right now. Can I, can I take this anymore? I'm gonna start using marijuana. I never have, but this is driving me to it. I just want everybody to know that. For medical reasons, of course.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll see you next time in a, in a blue haze, Hershey.
I'll be coughing. I won't be able to talk.
Was there a second to that motion by the way?
Here is a second. Uh, no, Hershey?
What? Guy, aye!
Ken Conley.
Aye.
Bernal Bailey.
I would like, I would like to put on the agenda, not using Robert's rules of order anymore. I'm gonna have my Quaker friends come in and do a training about having a meeting without Robert's rules. How much you can do that?
Okay.
Try the meatloaf. I'm here all week, folks.
Bye.
Bye, guys.
Bye. Bye, guys.